Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, April 13th at 6:00 PM. Members of the public can participate in our meeting and they can do it here in public, joining us, or they can view the meeting live on Channel 4, or they can go to LHCAZ.gov/TV. We are receiving public comment via email. For those that can't attend in person, doing so an hour before this meeting, you could email cityclerk@LHCAZ.gov. We'll now have the invocation from Pastor Kay Zimmerman from Cityana Hill International Church. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we live in a city where we can invite you to come. And so invite you, we do. And we just thank you, Father God, that you care about this city, Lake Havasu City. I thank you that you have great plans for this city, that you have vision for it, Lord. Vision for good, vision to prosper. I thank you, Father God, for the leaders that you have put in position, for our miracle, for each one, Father, on the council. Fire chief, police chief, each one who serves our city, I thank you for them, God. I pray protection over them. I pray divine wisdom for them, Lord. I pray safety for our city, continued safety. We thank you that we live in a safe place. And now, Father, I just feel to pray as Jesus prayed. Our Father, who art in heaven, holy is your name. We pray your kingdom come, your will be done, right here in this city, as it is in heaven. And we thank you for it, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus.
Thank you. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Fraternal Order of Eagles. If you want to, please make your way to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would like to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you do with the Eagles?
Sure, we can do that.
Excellent.
My name is Steve Hendricks. I'm the Worthy President there. This is-
My name is Addie Angle and I'm the Auxiliary President there.
So, I'm sure a lot of people have heard about the Eagles, but just kind of give you a little brief history. We started in 1898 in Seattle, Washington. There was a bunch of business owners that owned theaters and there was a musician's strike. And they got together and said, you know what? Let's form our own Good Charity Act. And what they did is they just started helping people, which is what we're all about, is people helping people. Here in Havasu, we've been here for, next year we are 30th year for this area. We are the largest, we're not the largest building-wise. We are the largest as far as membership in the nation. We honor our veterans. We honor our police and our firemen so much that their first year of membership, their dues is free. So, only thing you have to pay for is an enrollment cost of $20. Our membership goes from June 1st through May 31st. But I just kind of wanted to give you a couple of real quick highlights. So, the Eagles, we started Mother's Day. We're the one that put it on, to bring it forth into Congress to actually celebrate Mother's Day. Among many other things that we've done, everything from the Workers' Compensation Act to, it's just a multitude of things. Our biggest pride thing right now that we've got going is the DRC, what we call the Diabetes Research Center, that we put in at the University of Iowa. And we made a commitment seven years ago to donate 25 million. We're at $33 million now and we are that close to having a cure for diabetes. Our only issue right now is the fact that we can't do any human testing because Big Pharma doesn't want us to do that yet. So, because it's a pretty big business. But I just want to give you real quick, here locally at our area, in the last 29 years, we're about $2.5 million to local charities that we've donated. Everything from Faith and Grace to Haven House, to hospice, to Heart Fund. Yeah, there's so many of them. It's just that we, and we do it every month. So, it's, to us, that's what we're doing, is trying to help our community, to build our community to be a better place to be in. So, but I just want to give you a couple, one quick last thing. Past presidents that were Eagle members, this might be surprising. Theodore Roosevelt, Warren Harding, Franklin D. Roosevelt, John F. Kennedy, Harry Truman, Jimmy Carter, and Ronald Reagan. Entertainment-wise, Bob Hope, Jimmy Durante, Billy Ray Cyrus, Tony Orlando, Charlie Daniels, Bret Michaels. Charlie Daniels played at our Grand Convention last year. Bret Michaels is playing at it this year. Bret was a childhood diabetic, still is a diabetic. So, he's really big with our Diabetes Research Center. But I mean, all in all, it's, everything we do there is, it's all for the community. That's what we try to do, to put us up, so we raise the community up the best we can. So, do you have anything else?
He doesn't say it at all.
Oh, good.
Excellent. Well, thank you for joining us and thank you for all you do for our community.
Thanks for the invite, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, item three, or excuse me, item four on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Jim Dolan-
Present.
David Lane-
Here.
Michelle Lynn-
Here.
Cameron Moses-
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch-
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi-
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is our Call to the Public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council within the, with any matter within the jurisdiction of our community. Your comments would be for three minutes or less. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining and red means that the three minutes has expired. You don't have to sign up to speak at Call to the Public, but we did have a few folks do so, so we'll go in that order first and then anyone else that would like to address the council can do so. So, we'll start with Christine Simmons.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. This is really for many people in our community that helped with our cleanup day. It was so successful. So, we want to thank all the volunteers that came out and helped. Plus, our mayor and our city manager and Nancy Campbell and her family all showed up. And it was a successful day. We filled an entire dumpster. It was so exciting to see the desert kind of clean again. And it was, the BLM was so delighted that Ranger Barry Sullins volunteered to pay all our dump fees. So, it was a beautiful thing and we want to thank everyone that participated and shared with us. I gave you a copy of an editorial that was in the paper dated April 2nd about dumping and trash. And he even gave a nice recognition to POD, Protect Our Desert. So, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. And thank you for all that you did to make sure that we got that area clean. Our next speaker is Ryan Brown.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Brown. I'm the eighth grade social studies teacher at Telus. And my students have been working on a civics and public policy assignment since January that they'd like to present to you. Thank you.
Good evening. We are the eighth grade social studies class at Telus. We are to present the idea of adding more sidewalks on South Kiowa for a healthier and safer community. In Lake Havasu City, there is a lack of sidewalks, specifically in residential areas. In fact, 40% of traffic accidents in the Lake Havasu City region have involved pedestrians and bicyclists. And 8% of pedestrian deaths were caused by walking along a road with no sidewalks. The lack of sidewalks, with the lack of sidewalks, people are forced to walk on the road and note, and on other people's property to get where they need to go. This brings more accidents and those streets will remain dangerous if left alone. Building more sidewalks along the road could prevent 88% of these deaths. The lack of sidewalks in the residential areas also don't encourage a healthy lifestyle. Lake Havasu City already has a 36.6% obesity rate with no encouragement to be healthier. Health problems like type 2 diabetes, liver cancer, depression, kidney cancer, anxiety, strokes, and many more are going to threaten our community. We had also interviewed Mr. Gallegos of the Lake Havasu Metro Planning Organization to see what he thinks.
We looked at three different solutions to the problem. Option one was to extend the sidewalks that are already built on South Kiowa. Option two was to build narrow sidewalks, which would save money and construction time. The third and last option is to create trails on the side of washes. Option two didn't work because it violates the ADA and is an affliction for the people with disabilities. Option one would work because it is accessible to people with disabilities. And option three would also work because it saves money and doesn't violate the ADA. Our class agreed with option one for the solution.
We would, we would like you to, wait. We would like you to consider putting more sidewalks on the street of Kiowa. This was our first option. It had the least amount of cons and the best benefits, such as a more active community, safer streets, which was a big factor in our project, making it safer and having people feel safe when they're trying to get somewhere. Although Kiowa isn't technically a residential area, it would be the foundation or starting point for our community to spread out to different areas so people can get from place to place without having to walk on the street or in bike lanes. We have thought of an action plan and we thought that if we put flyers in certain parts of the city, it would help spread awareness. And we've also sent out some surveys and they said they also thought that it would be better if there were more sidewalks. And we also spoke to LHMPO about more sidewalks and we got most of our information from them.
Thank you for your time. Any feedback is appreciated.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for presenting that to us. I'll talk just a second about sidewalks and the strategy in Havasu. But it's a call to the public, so we're not really able to have a two-way conversation, but most of our sidewalks are built from our school sites. So, elementaries, middle schools, high school, and they're built out. And as we expand that infrastructure, we do it from, from that area. And we'll talk more, maybe we can connect with Mr. Brown and maybe we can come to your class and give a presentation about sidewalks and how that goes and be able to have that two-way conversation in the future. So, thank you for presenting this evening. That concludes the speakers that signed up. But would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person Call to the Public. And we also did not receive any written comment prior to the meeting. We'll now move on to item six, our consent agenda. Would any council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Koch?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Starting with item 7.1 is the Fiscal Year 2020-21 Second Quarter Contracted Agency Reports. Chief Doyle has presented this in our packet for our information. Is there any questions? All right, seeing none, the information is available for you. We'll move on to item 7.2, which is the announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, four regular members and three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at www.LHCAZ.gov.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Hello, Tess, there we go. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off this evening's City Manager Report with some appreciation to Officer Earhart. The Lake Havasu City Municipal Court presented Officer Joseph Earhart with an appreciation plaque for his service and dedication to the Lake Havasu City Youth Court during his time as a school resource officer. Thank you, Officer Earhart, for your contributions to the youth in this town and your efforts with the Lake Havasu City Youth Court. Fantastic. Our Havasu Youth Advisory Council announces Operation Restock the Food Bank Project was a great success. Overall, including the drive-in movie, the community collection, and the drive-through event, the youth council brought in over $3,000 in monetary donations and get the 6,640 pounds of food, of which 835 pounds was donated by our very own employees here at the city from all of our different departments. The youth council thanks the Havasu Community Health Foundation Food Bank and its volunteers, the community, the city employees, the grocery stores, and the schools that participated and supported them with their project. So, we're in good shape with the, with the youth in Lake Havasu City when, when you see the good things our youth council is doing. Christine left us, sorry. And myself, you, Mayor Shihi, and Councilmember Campbell, we volunteered at the Protect Our Desert Cleanup on March 27th. Special thanks to Christine Simmons of POD for the invitation and coordinating the event. There was a lot of folks out there helping to clean up the desert. So, again, Christine, thank you. Mayor Shihi, you and Councilmember Nancy Campbell attended a ribbon cutting with the Chamber of Commerce ambassadors for a B&amp;Bs Fish grand opening that is located at the COS building. And Councilmember Dave Lane and Councilmember Nancy Campbell also attended the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce's Business Conversation at the Leonard Bridge Resort with Lisa Kruger and Congressman Gosar. Mayor Shihi, you proclaimed March 29th as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Lake Havasu City at our annual celebration event. Congressman Gosar made a special appearance to honor some of our local veterans and provided them with certificates. The event went off without a hitch, thanks to the Campbell family and the Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds, Elks Lodge 2399, the Marine Corps League Detachment 757, Vietnam Veterans of America Chapters 975, and the many volunteers of the city's Vietnam War Commemoration Planning Committee. Lots of people it took to make this event a success. And again, welcome home to our Vietnam veterans. Vice Mayor Jenny Koch presented a proclamation proclaiming April 6th as National Service Recognition Day in Lake Havasu City to AmeriCorps volunteers. National Service Recognition Day is an opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of the more than 1 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps. In Mojave County, more than 125 AmeriCorps members and volunteers of various ages and backgrounds helped meet local needs at more than 20 locations by tutoring or mentoring children and youth, supporting veterans and military families, combating the opioid epidemic, restoring the environment, and responding to disasters. Councilmember David Lane presented a proclamation proclaiming the week of April 11th through April 17th, or this week, as National Telecommunications Week in Lake Havasu City in honor of the men and women, men and women who are serving in our Lake Havasu City Police Department Emergency Dispatch Center. We have 13 911 dispatch operators that we are thankful for each and every one. They are truly an imperative conduit between those who call for help and those that deliver that help. Their diligence and professionalism keeps our city and citizens safe. In this photo, from left to right, is Public Safety Dispatcher Allison Miller. We have Public Safety Dispatcher Vicki Shannon. Of course, there's Vice Mayor David Lane, or excuse me, Councilmember David Lane. Sorry, I've been doing that. Police Support Services Manager Katie Stanley, Public Safety Dispatcher Zach Jones, Public Safety Dispatcher Seth Kemp, Police Chief Dan Doyle, and Support Services Captain Troy Sterling. These are truly our unsung heroes in our police department and we're very thankful for everything they do for us. Mayor Kalshihi reclaimed next week as Crime Victims Rights Week. Reaffirming Lake Havasu City's commitment and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. In this photo, from left to right, is Donna Brock, victim services volunteer. Then we have Crystal Stevens-Villarette, our Lake Havasu City Victim Service Specialist. Of course, Mayor Kalshihi. And then we have Mary Lou O'Connell, who is the Executive Director of Haven, and our Police Chief Dan Doyle. We'd also like to proclaim the month of April as, Mayor Shihi proclaimed the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and called upon citizens, communities, agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, therefore strengthening the communities in which we live. In this photo is Kristen Langstaff. She is the Community Outreach Coordinator for Haven. And then, of course, again, we have Crystal Stevens-Villarette, our Victim Service Specialist, Mayor Shihi, Mary Lou O'Connell, and our Police Chief Dan Doyle. Some great things happening. Last Friday, the Lake Havasu City Veterans Treatment Court held its 35th graduation ceremony. Eight veterans graduated from the program. Congressman Gosar presented each graduate with a congressional certificate. District Director Penny Pugh, State Senator Sonny Borelli, State Representative Leo Biassucci, and Councilmembers David Lane and Nancy Campbell were present for the, for the ceremony. Our Veterans Treatment Court has graduated 196 veterans since its inception in 2013. The Veterans Treatment Court has a national average recidivism rate of 25%. So, that's for veterans' courts across the country, it's 25% for treatment's courts. Our Lake Havasu City Veterans Treatment Court has a, has a rate of under 10%. That is, that is fantastic. And that number is much, much lower than the national standards that are out there for outside of specialty courts. But 25% is the standard in the country and we're at 10%, thanks to Judge Calali and his team. Coffee with the Mayor and City Manager has been moved from Friday, May 7th to the week before, on Friday, April 30th. It'll be the last Friday of this month and it'll be from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM in the Relics and Rods Hall at the Aquatic Center. So, please enjoy a come-and-go setting where residents are encouraged to express issues, concerns, or questions. And lastly, our, the latest COVID update in terms of cases and numbers. As of today, there has been 96 new cases from my last report. You can see the breakdown by month in the graphic shown above. The good news is that, is that swift decline that we're seeing there in the last several months. Let's keep that going. Of course, this information is provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, moving on to item eight, Public Hearings. Item 8.1 is Discussion of Possible Action if Necessary to Comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law Following the Executive Session that Occurred at 4:00 PM this afternoon Regarding the Negotiation of the City Magistrate Employment Contract, the Negotiation of the City Manager Employment Contract, and the Negotiation of the City Attorney Employment Contract. So, this item is a public hearing, but the discussions of that, we'll come back with the contract at a subsequent meeting. It is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. I know it's very awkward. Why would we open a public hearing? We like getting any information, but there will be a subsequent public hearing with information if you have specific questions. But I'll now open the public hearing if anyone has any questions or comments on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing. And we also did not receive any written comment prior to the meeting. Bring it back to council for possible motion or discussion.
Mayor.
And Vice Mayor Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to direct the staff to proceed as discussed in Executive Session to finalize the employment contracts for the city manager, city attorney, and city magistrate and bring back to the council for consideration at a meeting in May.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is document, or excuse me, Adopt Ordinance Number 21-1252, declaring the document entitled "The 2012-2014 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Tax Code, March 23rd, 2021, A Public Record and Amending the City Code by Adopting By-Reference Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Tax Code Relating to the Transaction Privilege Tax." Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The item before you tonight is the adoption of the ordinance that was introduced to you at your last council meeting. As a reminder, this ordinance amendment cleans up the model city tax code and makes it consistent for all the model city tax code versions in the state. It reflects all of the taxes applicable to Lake Havasu City. But these changes do not change any of the taxes, do not change any rates. It is just cleanup and administrative consistency throughout the document. So, with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any questions of Ms. Olson? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing. And we also have not received any written comments on this item. Bring it back to council for a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1252, declaring the document entitled "The 2012-2014 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Tax Code, March 23rd, 2021, A Public Record and Amending the City Code by Adopting By-Reference Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Tax Code Relating to the Transaction Privilege Tax."
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 8.3, Adopt Resolution Number 21-3489, authorizing the submission of an application for federal fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds and authorizing all necessary, all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in the application. Ms. Olson, are you going to take that one?
Holly Moran is with us this evening via Zoom and she'll take this item.
Is, I'm sorry, did you say Holly was with us on Zoom?
Holly is with us. I think she needs to unmute and then she should be able to continue. There we go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Jill. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Holly Moran, the Grants Administrator for the city. This item relates to Community Development Block Grant Funding, also known as TDBG. We are submitting an application to Arizona Department of Housing to be used for owner-occupied housing rehabilitation within city limits for low-income homeowners. Homeowners must meet income and homeownership requirements in order to qualify for housing rehabilitation assistance. Home repair enables low-income homeowners to remain in their homes by improving health and safety conditions, increasing accessibility, and improving functional abilities in their homes. This program enables low-income homeowners to age in place as well as not becoming homeless due to non-livable conditions in their homes. Anyone interested in applying for housing rehabilitation can obtain an application on the city website, in the city hall lobby, or by contacting me. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Moran. Could you talk a little bit about some of the projects that some of our citizens have used these grant dollars for in the past?
Yes, Sewer Connections, that was a project that happened over many, many years. And since I started here, it's been used for owner-occupied housing rehabilitation.
Great, thank you. So, are there any other questions of the council? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just had a comment. A lot of people don't realize that we have this program here in the city where you can obtain a grant to get your home, if you're a low-income homeowner, to get your home fixed. Now, Holly works behind the scenes on the different grants programs, but this is one of the big ones that she works on, to ensure that those people that are the most vulnerable here in our city are able to get their homes fixed. So if you know somebody, even if it's not you that qualifies, many of us know people that could use a little bit of assistance. Have them reach out to Holly at City Hall to see if maybe she can help them out to get the repairs needed for their home. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments of council? All right, Mrs. Moran, you also mentioned they can contact you. What is the best way for citizens to contact you?
They can call me, or they can also, if they want, download an housing grant application off the city website, and they can come into the city hall lobby to obtain a housing grant application.
Yeah, fantastic. So then just go to the website at LHCaz.gov and pull the application, or call us at City Hall. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing, and we have not received any written comments on this item. Bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
I motion, I move to adopt resolution number 21-3489, authorizing the submission of an application for federal fiscal year 2021 CDBG funds and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in the application.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, and who got to it first? And a second from Councilmember Dolan. It was very close. And any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, Item 8.4 is Award Agreement for Professional Construction Support Services for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Equalization Basin Replacement Project to Corolo Engineers, Inc. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's an honor to be here tonight. I'm with the Public Works Department Engineering Division. I am a project manager for them, and in particular, a project manager over the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Equalization Basin Project. So what we're bringing to you tonight is a recommendation to award a construction phase services contract with Corolo Engineers. I have a brief presentation. I'd like to go ahead and initiate here just to kind of catch you up to speed on where we are at. If most of you are aware, we do have three wastewater treatment plants throughout the city. This one in particular is on the island, and it is just off of McCulloch Boulevard there as you're coming on to, well, not on to, you travel a little ways past where the paths go off there. I apologize for lack of a better term. So just beyond, that's where our wastewater treatment plant is, and within that, we have a number of components to the wastewater treatment plant, and this one in particular is the Flow Equalization Basin, which I have pointed out here for you. This Flow Equalization Basin is an important component to the wastewater treatment plant process. The original FEB was constructed in 1983 and then modified in 1999 for odor control. And unfortunately, due to some various issues that we had and some failures, it shut down in 2011, and we were able to do so at that point, in my understanding, due to some lower levels, and we were able to kind of reroute some things and deal with the waste at other two plants. However, as the island continues to grow and the city continues to grow, we recognize the need to go ahead and reconstruct this, and Corolo Engineers was hired in 2019 to design a replacement Flow Equalization Basin project. So this contract that we're asking for recommendation of award is simply for the construction phase services. So Corolo Engineers is the engineering firm that designed the Flow Equalization Basin. They're the ones that are very familiar with it. Our hope is to come back to you here in a month or two and look for a bidding process on a recommendation of award for the actual construction of the FEB, and as part of that process, we'll need Corolo Engineers to assist us in the answering of questions that come in during the bidding process that are of technical matter related to their design. I do want to highlight that the existing FEB is an earthen structure. This new one going in is actually a concrete structure, and will have very nice odor control to keep the odor down and pretty much null. And it will have a capacity around 500,000 gallons, so room for growth as the city continues to grow. As a staff, we were able to negotiate a contract of $234,777, which is actually less than 5% of the estimated construction cost, which the current cost is estimated at 5.3. Do want to emphasize that this contract will cover a period of 12 months, which is what's expected to build the FEB, assuming we get a good bid on the actual Flow Equalization Basin when we go to bid it. And that's kind of a quick summary.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions of council? Mr. Hart? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none in person, we'll close the public hearing, and we also did not receive any written comment on this item. I'll bring it back to council for discussion, questions, or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the Agreement for Professional Services for the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Equalization Basin Project to Corolo Engineers Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is Award Bid for the 8-Inch Sewer Force Main Repairs Project to Premier Backhoe, Inc. Mr. Hart?
Thank you once again. I appreciate our team coming for you this evening. I am the project manager of this particular project. It is an 8-inch sewer force main repair project. As some of you may or may not be aware, the city does have an 8-inch sewer force main that runs from the north treatment plant down to the south treatment plant, to the island and such, and it has been experiencing some challenges in terms of maintenance and repair. We are, have recognized that, and we have had several instances on various weekends where we've had to do some emergency repairs, which are very costly. And this particular project, we're looking at and have identified seven locations where we can see a potential failure, and what's happening here is this pipe is a ductile iron pipe, and there's areas in there where it's going like this, and there's areas for pockets of air to occur, which is hydrogen sulfide is where we see that occurring, and it's eating away at the top of that pipe. And I think I might have some little slides here to show you more about it. This is the area that the 8-inch sewer force main runs. This particular project, we're going to focus between Pallaverty Boulevard North and Lakeside Drive, or Lake Drive, though I show it going up to Chinna with Road, which will be a project next year that we'll be bringing to you. The purpose that I shared is to repair an existing sewer force main ductile iron pipe to allow for continued uninterrupted service and potential elimination of costly emergency repairs. We ran some numbers here today, looking at what repairs have cost us in terms of the emergency repairs that tend to happen on the weekends over the last two years, and it's to the tune of $104,000 is what we spent, so this will be a very valuable project. The project itself, it's kind of a come-in-and-get-it-done type project, so it's only 60 calendar days. We expect the completion to be in 2021. The construction budget that's been set aside in the CIP is $140,000. As you'll see in your council communications, we did open bids on March 21st, 21st, 24th, 2021, and we had two contractors bid on the project. One bid was Premier Backhoe Incorporated for $143,448.99, and the second one was Tricens Engineering at $224,469. So Premier was the little bidder, and after doing our due diligence and research on Premier Backhoe, we have worked with them in the past here at the city. They are a high-quality contractor and have been utilized for some of the emergency repairs. They're very familiar with this project area in particular. The project itself will replace 1,200 millimeter feet of 8-inch DIP with C900 Class 305 DR14 PVC, which is like a sewer pipe, more suitable. And it's going to focus on seven locations, as I shared, and it begins at Pallaverty South and ends at Lake Drive. This picture here, just giving an idea of what tends to happen if we don't see a blowout, is we'll see a nice little wet line forming along the path of the ductile iron pipe, which tells us we got problems. And then when we go in, typically, we see that picture on the lower right where the top of the pipe has been eaten out, and the sewer is seeping, so this will take care of that problem.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Hart? Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Just out of curiosity, the pipe that's in there now, the ductile iron, about how old is that? Roughly, and I don't expect you to know the exact answer.
I want to say it's 15 years.
50?
Approximately 15.
Oh, 15, 1.5?
Yeah.
Oh, my. And how long will the new pipe last?
50.
50?
Yeah.
So a big difference. Okay, and then, do we have any idea, I mean, 33% difference between the two bids? Do we have any idea? Did somebody really underbid, or did somebody really overbid?
I should have mentioned, and I apologize for not doing so, our engineer's estimate was $140,000. The second bid, I imagine, was driven by the market. I envision that the company's very busy, and got a lot going on, but, you know, if they could, they would do it for that amount, so.
Okay, and then one last thing. We just, over in that same area, from about Pallaverty North going south, we just replaced a whole bunch of pipe. Does this connect to that pipe? Is it part of the same line?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So eventually, we'll have the whole thing replaced with 50 iron pipe instead of 15-year pipe?
Yes, next year, you'll know on the CIP, we have approximately 1.7 million allotted for a project that will cover all the areas that this is not going to cover, but these are seven locations identified as problem areas we need to address right away.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
Motion?
Oh, actually, let's open up the public hearing if there's no other questions. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing, and we have not received any written comment either. I'll bring it back to council for a possible motion. Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. Motion?
Yes, please.
I motion to move to award the 8-inch sewer pipe Sewer Force Main Repairs Project to Premier Backhoe, Inc.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Item 8.6 is Adopt Resolution Number 21-3498, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustment. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received four applications requesting consideration for appointment as regular members to the Board of Adjustment. These appointments are needed to fill the current vacancies of regular member positions on the Board of Adjustment. All four applications were provided to you in your packet. Mr. Don Bergen is in attendance today in person, and Ms. Robin Hill is on Zoom to make a brief presentation to the council and answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So we'll start, Mr. Bergen, if you'd like to make your way to the podium and just share with us why you'd like to join the Board of Adjustments?
Good evening. Yes, I am here to ask for reappointment to the Board of Adjustment that stopped meetings seven or eight years ago. But I have quite a few years of experience with the Board of Adjustment, including being president of it, or chairman, I mean. And then I had also, I've also been with the Planning and Zoning Commission for quite a while. I came here 31 years ago, and about four or five months after getting here, I went on to the Planning and Zoning Commission after being on the planning and zoning in Colorado. And I have all these, all this time of experience between the planning and zoning and the Board of Adjustment, and it all adds up to a lot of knowledge and experience with the city regulations. So I feel that I can quite adequately handle this assignment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. Are there any questions of the council, Mr. Bergen? All right, and then Ms. Hill, you're on Zoom. Good evening. It's good to see you. If you'd, I'd like to say a few words. I think you're muted right now. Okay, I think you said, give me one minute. What she? Oh, I have to unmute you. Okay, I, maybe in the back? Can you make that happen? No.
Mute.
Oh, there you are.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Hill. Good evening.
Hello. I was previously appointed to the Board of Adjustment a few years ago, a couple of years ago, I guess, and unfortunately, we didn't have the opportunity to hear any cases. Maybe fortunately, because you do such a good job, and your planning commission does such a good job. But I feel that based on the request to have the board reappointed, I would do an excellent job for the city. Love the city of Havasu. Been here for, gosh, 12 years now, and my husband and I have a construction company, and we admire what's going on here and would love to do what we can for the city.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right, well, thank you for joining us this evening. All right, so the Board of Adjustments, what that group does is it's kind of a quasi-judicial board that meets as needed when that occurs. And so as Mr. Bergen mentioned, we haven't met in a while. There hasn't been a need to meet in a while, and so that's a good thing, as Ms. Hill indicated. This evening, we have four applicants and four spots available for those applicants. We have Mr. Bergen and Ms. Hill for reappointment, and then we have Mr. Harris and Mr. Gordon. Their applications are in our packet, but they were unable to attend this evening. Do any members of the council have questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing, and we also have not received any written comment. Bring it back to council for possible motion, questions, comments?
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Koch?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 21-3498, Appointing Members to the Board of Adjustment. Ms. Robin Hill as a regular member with a term ending June, I'm sorry, Don Bergen to as a regular member with a term ending June 20, 2022. Robin Hill as a regular member with a term ending June 30, 2023, and Jim Harris and Michael Gordon as regular members with terms ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Great, thank you, and thank you for volunteering, Mr. Bergen and Ms. Hill, and Mr. Harris and Mr. Gordon. All right, moving on to Item 9 is Current Events. Do we have any council committee reports? Councilmember Campbell?
I am excited to say that the PED is moving forward with the No-App building. I always mess up that name. And we should, we have signed a contract with our contractor and hopefully breaking ground soon.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. All right, seeing no other current or council committee reports, Item 10 is our future meetings. Our next meeting will be Thursday, April 22, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. That's a budget. That's a budget and a CIP overview work session. Then on Tuesday, April 27, 2022, at 5:00 p.m., we'll have a work session prior to our regular meeting that same evening, Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Item 11, are there any future discussion items of council? Seeing none, item 12, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Be kind, thank you for joining us this evening.